Start the first meeting in person in a long time of the Planning Commission of Latha Village for this meeting of Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we'll start with the call to order. And? The pledge of allegiance is missing.
Yeah.
I'm not approving this agenda.
Let's stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll start with a roll call.
Roll call. Chair Potowski.
Here.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Here.
Secretary Stansberry.
Here.
Or Commissioner Fox.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
And Commissioner Canton. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Like make a motion to excuse Commissioner Canton.
Vote in favor? Roll call?
You don't have to do the roll call vote anymore since you're in person.
Okay, awesome. Alright, perfect. See, we gotta break those habits too.
In favor, aye.
Yeah, aye. Hey, so move on to the third item of the agenda, and that's the approval of the agenda itself. So I'm sure everyone's had a chance to review this and will entertain any comment at this time or any suggested modifications. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve as it's written.
Do we need to modify the agenda to include the pledge of allegiance? It matters? That's a question for Scott.
Did you hear that question?
No, I missed that. What was it?
Do we need to modify the agenda to include the pledge of allegiance? It's not on here.
No, that could be included as part of the call to order.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Correct. Vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. More again? No? Okay, motion passes. Alright, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from twelve, twenty-one, twenty-one. There's a copy here covering the last time we met, actually. If there are no objections to how it's written, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the meeting of December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Hearing none, motion passes as well. So we'll move on to the public comments for items not on the agenda.
Not in first speed. But would like to be. But there is none.
Okay, I'll just pause for a minute here. One little technological. By foot.
Listen, listen and learn.
Check out the process.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
That's it.
So we'll move on to item six on the agenda, which is the old business and tabled items, draft ordinance for the EV charging stations for our parking.
Yeah, so we've been talking about this for a couple of months now. And we had, after the presentation, um, last, at our last meeting, you know, there wasn't, there really didn't seem to be a lot of additional comments. So we wanted to re-present, we did make there are minimal changes on, like where are they in red? On, while they're on pages eight and nine of the packet, we did talk about the locations of, of where these EV chargers may be. Added in some language about the reliability of the overall network, which is something that was a concern for, for you all as we were talking to them, as well as more specifically stating that, that the permitting would have to be complying with all of our local building and electrical codes. And then adding some language in there about the maintenance of those charging stations, again, going back to their reliability. So this is the latest and greatest draft for you, and if you're ready to do so, after your discussion, instead of public hearing, to move forward with the ordinance, right? We have already had a couple of different development projects, start talking about, hey, what if we put an EV charger there? That's a good time.
Yeah.
Did we have a discussion, and bring me back, did we have a discussion about some kind of survey or something to determine how many people in Latha Village had electric vehicles? I think we had a discussion about that, and I don't know where it ended.
That does sound familiar. I know I didn't put together a survey. Eric, do you?
Yeah, I don't know if we've ever moved forward with that.
But I would say it's a good idea. We should absolutely do a survey like that, but I think we can move forward with ordinance language in parallel.
Yeah, I don't know that there's one that necessarily makes one dependent on the other. We would expect, I would imagine, that that number is going to be rising. Just given where the market is headed and where the incentive, well, the incentives have been headed, whether it's monetary incentives, but so I have, yeah, I am in support of the concept.
So there are a couple of comments in the recommendation section of the letter about, we may wish to discuss whether EV stations should be required for new non-single-family residential development as a proactive measure. So I, on the one hand, I kinda, I kinda get the point, like if we're gonna have like another apartment building or a condo complex or something like that, then they have multiple EVs that are that are parked there, housed there, garage there, that you might need to have charging stations available because people won't necessarily be able to install their own. On the other hand, not a whole lot of room to develop new buildings in the city right now, so.
So that would be looking forward to the, to the future and potential, you know, redevelopment, pretty much. So I don't think there's, I mean, I don't know that that would be a reason to necessarily hold off on considering implementing.
I agree. The question is, should we include language that specifically calls out that installation of EV stations is required for new non-single-family residential developments?
Since my point is to acquire it, as long as we're able to change kind of how we're doing some zoning, then the, the business would have to take on that and will be notified of such. But the word requirement means that we couldn't premature in, in forcing those installations. Just given the way things are rolling out, we don't know the future. And so I think that additional language for those businesses to say, look, we're gonna have, it's not grandfather, you're not just sitting there and we'd have to think about how to roll that out. I think the requirement may be a little heavy at this juncture.
So are we talking about requirement for the not, non-single-family commercial? Because that's the language that we started the conversation here on.
It's two different things, right? So this is asking about residential. I think we already discussed commercial. And we were in agreement that, and I think the language in the proposed ordinance actually calls out that service should be provided so that EV stations could be installed in the parking lots of new developments, but it doesn't dictate that you have to install the stations themselves.
This means you have the capacity there.
The ability to, yeah, so, which I support. But, and then the question though is for not, for non-single-family residential, it's a different story, right? So I wanna make sure we're clear about whether or not we think we should include that type of language for non, non-single-family residential as well.
Which is an incentive to possible residents in that sort of a development, you know, that we would wanna mandate it versus, versus let the market drive. You know, that is an attractant for somebody who decides to develop a multi-family.
Right. So I think that, from my perspective, I feel like just having the electrical service available to install the stations is an appropriate requirement for both commercial and residential. I don't think it needs to be any different at this point.
I think of it like the person that has a kitchen that's out of date and they haven't actually updated their electrical outlets. But once you actually view something, you wanna get permitted to view some update on your kitchen, well, then obviously things have to actually now be in line with that. So it's a, it's a way to kind of backfill depending on the language and.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, you know, it's something viable to do. I mean, if, just out of the abstract explanation, you're proposing that only two households in the city had an electric vehicle, I mean, I know it's down the road a little bit. No pun intended, or fun intended. But on the same token, if you had a quarter of the people that currently had electric vehicles, that might justify a deeper look because you know it's going to increase from twenty-five percent or quarter of the people.
No, that's, yeah, so that's a perfect example of, you know, there's probably a tipping point where now it's actually put into a different language. Not for this opportunity here, but future forward, there is probably, that's where things are going. So that would be to actually.
So I just wanna make sure I'm following. What you're proposing, Jason, is that if someone wanted to develop another multi-unit.
Residential.
Well, residential, that the ordinance would say you just have to simply, in your development, prepare it for the electric station. It's not requiring you to put them in.
Correct. Okay, yeah, provide the service so that they could be installed but not actually install the.
Then that way, anytime you do something, when you upgrade the property for a new residential, it's all prepped for it. You don't have to do it. You don't have to put in the stations, but at least it's prepped for it. Which is the same language or language that's comparable with the commercial. That, that's fine.
This is the last, yeah, I was thinking of another example where now, now survey resident makes sense for the multi-unit, right? Because if you're a critical mass in that establishment and there's so many people that you want it as a service, now, now we start to get some feedback loops to understand when do we actually introduce that language.
I think we might have interest in potentially, I don't know whether it would be amongst residents. If you had a multi-family, is it strictly residence versus new residence or people that you're attracting to it? May certainly be an incentive. Suzie, is the, is, is there any sense from the business side of things from that if this was like mandated, you had to install so many parking spaces that have act, an actual charger? Is, would that be a disincentive attracting business or is that something you, you have any sense on based on, you know, what you're seeing or what you're hearing?
The, 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 the couple of projects that have already started talking about installing EV chargers. One is currently underway and it would actually be a it would be it'd be an outside company installing those EV chargers on that property. It's not something the property owner is initiating on his own, but is looking to fill. And I think, I don't, obviously, I don't think it's a disincentive for him. Right? I think that, that particular product he's, he's excited for when he decides to see this change.
Right.
And then the, the other project, I, I don't think that it would be a disincentive to, to that project. But they also have the, they have the financial capacity to, to make that happen. I think maybe some of the smaller redevelopment projects that we may see coming through in the next couple of years that might be challenging for some. But you know, at the, at the same time, the DDA, with my DDA hat on, I mean, we're looking for ways to, how can, how can the DDA help facilitate the, you know, some of these improvements. Maybe that gets rolled into, we've got our facade and site specification program, which has expanded last year, so it's not just the building facade, but it also covers like improvement of the landscaping, improving of the, of the parking lot, so EV chargers would also fall within that, so trying to find ways to maybe help offstop that.
Yeah.
Makes it a little bit more palatable.
It's really the market dynamics, to your point, that may actually come into play here because it's a sweet spot between being too heavy-handed.
Yeah.
And led the market actually run its course, because from a zoning perspective, we could actually be, again, I just worry about being too primitive in terms of those small businesses.
That's kind of why I like the concept of, of capacity, but not necessarily install. So it's kind of like a partial incentive. But it doesn't go all the way to requiring them to provide the actual.
Right. So, and it's something that, I mean, we could certainly even say, you know, as part of our redevelopment-ready communities, right? What can you do to incentivize developers to do certain things, you know, whether it is, you know, if you want them to install the chargers, maybe it's, maybe we have to find the incentive here at the city to say, I don't know, we reduce fees or, you know, we expedite the process, which is pretty fast to begin with, but you know, I mean, maybe if, you know, maybe that's one avenue to go down, or, I mean, ordinances can be changed, we know, right? So if we find that tipping point, you know, we're like, okay, we're, we're, we're good with this capacity, if they, if there, it's available. And now we do our survey, no, actually, let's push a little harder. We can always make that change.
I think it's an important initial step. I think it's, it's, it's the right step to take without necessarily being too heavy-handed about it, so.
Which makes the survey make even more sense because then we have baseline data.
Yeah.
So now we can actually do it different and say, okay, this is where we were in twenty twenty-two, February. Now, where are we six months from now, a year from now? And now we're starting to see a trend line of where, how fast it's moving, etc.
And technically, if anybody, I mean, to the point where is, if anybody has installed chargers in their, in their residence, anything that requires more than a, you know, one-ten, you're, you're up to two oh-eight, you're, you're likely having to have some electrical service done to, to get, to get it done. And, and the city should be being informed about that because there should be permits being filed for electrical.
Any idea how many two-twenty's we're getting? No, not off the top of my head.
You could go find out for us for next meeting, that would be great.
But you're right, I mean, yes, all of that work would be requiring from it, so.
Right, I'm not, I'm not making that, the statement is like a conditional for us to consider right now. I just, this additional level of information that, that would speak to that demand apart from a survey. People who have an electric vehicle are doing something.
Well, also our power grid.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Capacities, especially when you get into the, yeah, the, the level two, level three, if anybody went to level three. But it's not listed as level three in here. It was kind of, I thought we had talked about it to be one, two, three. They, they left three off in the description, but not, not that that one was the most likely to be popping up because of the, what was involved, but yeah, so. So yeah, there was, we, we chatted about that issue, I think, at one of the times that we met in the past about, you know, what that does up to the power grid itself, but that's a bigger, that's a bigger issue that the, that the power companies will or would likely be dealing with and, and, you know, how quickly that happens, you know, how quickly it takes over and it becomes like we need more service for capacity.
So we have a qualitative and a quantitative. A survey would actually look at sentiment, so we're getting that side, you know, and also being able to look at metrics of how many people are doing those type of polls will give us some harder numbers.
And that might be, how do you have now currently? Are you considering, and how likely are you to consider in the future and what that might, you know, tell us in terms of information, that we can also then see how it really plays out, you know, down the road if we have a follow-up, but that's, you know.
It was just the ordinance then.
Correct, right, so.
The, the reference to different charging station types is in the top paragraph.
Yep.
The first paragraph of the amended section two dot two, last sentence, EDCS, they include level one, two, and three charging stations.
Okay, yeah.
The ordinance allows for all three of them.
Yeah.
And then there is a reference in the recommended, the recommendation of the memo from Difles Webster. In addition to what we were just talking about with non-single-family residential developments, to add language to section five dot thirteen, which is for parking, that, that this is the thing that would require all new expanded and reconstructed parking areas to provide electrical capacity necessary to accommodate the future hardware installation of level two ECBSs and a specific amount of required parking. And I think we should visit that language and amend section five dot thirteen. We don't have language for that today, so that'll be some homework for Difles Webster. Please provide us a proposed language on that, but I think it should include level two and level three, not just level two. It may not, I mean, nobody, it may be that nobody ever decides to, they want to install a level three charger just because they're expensive.
Right.
But, but the, the language in the ordinance should address it, control it, or, okay, address it and have some, some limitation on it, or at least, you know, some control on it. And yeah, and then there's the question of, well, if we dictate that a certain number of parking spots in the required number of parking spots for any specific size building includes a certain percentage of EV charging stations, what's that percentage? So the, Difles Webster is suggesting ten to fifteen percent might be appropriate? It should be more, maybe it should last.
What does everyone think on that percentage number? They wanna have thoughts on that?
I, I feel like for now, it's just like with everything else we're talking about, we, we don't know enough, right? We need to do more surveys, need to see what the utilization is gonna be, so we start somewhere, and I can always change it later.
But then wouldn't the number of spaces really be dictated by the type of business?
Sure.
Certainly, yeah.
Language already, the ordinance already kind of addresses that based on square footage, right, and number of units and.
And the, and the type of business. So if you stick with making sure that it's electrified to the point where you can put in the station, the type of business will dictate the number of spaces that.
Great point. So it's like if we're, if we're requiring electrical service to serve a certain number of electrical vehicle charging stations to support a percentage of the total parking spots, that's important. Even if you're not in charge installing a charging station yet, the electrical service that is being run should support enough chargers to support that in space.
You almost have to know how many stations you think you're gonna put in.
Yeah.
To know how much power you're gonna have to have available.
And I feel like maybe you require the electrical service to be over provision compared to the number of required charging stations. Because I could always install more charging stations above the percentage required.
You could always do that.
As long as the electrical service is there. If you don't provide enough electrical service, then you're kind of hands-off.
Well, that's going back to, back to the grid.
Correct.
Right, I don't think we're, we're at the point yet where we're concerned immediately about what the grid issues will be, but that would probably come down the road based on demand and based on the need to do it.
Well, depending on how the electrical service is installed, like if it's, if it's done underground, and yeah, change it. You're talking about ripping up cement, rerunning service.
Right, well, this is taking service from the pole.
That's how our city is running for the most part, but you know, modern architectures has a lot of underground.
Oh yes, I'm not saying about the, the method that it's delivered, but just the, the, the capacity from the grid itself.
Yeah, that's true. It's always gonna be from the pole and so.
Yeah.
ET changes it.
Right.
That's true.
Okay. So, sounds like we are, have, what, recommendations to, let's see, updates of language?
Well, that's one, one more thing for five point one three. Are, are we making an assumption that, that basically the parking lots are kind of replacing electric vehicle charging? We actually don't know where those nodes are actually gonna wind up being in four or five years. So we could be requiring businesses to create this infrastructure, but we, I mean, are we saying, because I don't know gasoline stations, is that, it's gonna be a misnomer in five or ten years. And so, you know, the, the parking lot may not actually wind up being the charging mecca. We don't know that. And, and so we may actually, again, I don't know if the market's gonna actually wire on this, and I, I get it, I love it personally. But I'm actually just remiss to say I would not want a business to actually put in all this power that's accessible. And then technically, the, the solution that comes out in the future is some new thing that we, we don't, we don't know that's coming. I wanna be prepared, because that was a sweet spot.
Well, there's also the, I mean, when we talk about having capacity, is the capacity back at the panel in the facility versus, we're not talking where, what infrastructure do you install?
Uh huh.
I don't know, does it really speak to that? Does the ordinance require installation to a point outside the building, or, or is there anything that defines what the expectation is regarding that, or is that?
The ordinance language in front of us doesn't address that at all.
Wasn't it addressed in the presentation?
It was talked about in the presentation.
Yeah.
And it is mentioned in the recommendation in the memo from Difles Webster on this topic that we might wanna amend section five dot thirteen of the ordinance, which addresses parking to also include, you know, redeveloped parking lots also include the provisioning of service, of electrical capacity. But it doesn't actually define what we mean by electrical capacity, and you make a great point, Mark, electric capacity should be, could just be the box in the building has enough open circuits at a higher voltage that you could install something.
Right, what does it mean for, for, what does it mean for the, the, the house service or, you know, the service to the, you know, with the service panel that needs to be provided for a business to accommodate?
Yeah.
Updating panels can, can cost some money.
Yes.
So I think we need to get, I, I don't think that affects the language that we're looking at for the rest of, like the ordinance that's in front of us, the amended language for section two dot two. But it will impact what we end up recommending for amendments to the parking ordinance, section five dot thirteen.
Okay, do we have, I guess, consensus or, or clear direction that we can give to Difles Webster on this? Things that we want for the next.
So I guess, yeah, we, we're looking for draft language to amend section five dot thirteen for parking, as you guys recommended, to require all new expanded and reconstructed parking areas to provide electrical capacity necessary to accommodate the future hardware installation of level two and level three ECBSs. And we need some recommendation about how do we define what electrical capacity means? So it's clear for anybody that might be applying for a permit to do this type of redevelopment, what, what's actually expected of them.
Might also be useful to know whether the building codes themselves delve into this at all. I don't know that they would, I mean, I, there's.
I mean, I can certainly ask our building official, but I would assume.
I would assume it's local municipality dictating.
And I think it would be more in the electrical.
Right, right.
Into Les' point about the percentage, I think, I think we're, Les, we're bringing up, we don't know the percentage based upon the business case.
Yeah, you, you won't know it.
Right, so, so more generic language, so that, that way, you know, it's, I don't know how you do that.
So, well, we could, uh, it could be language that says something along the lines of the percentage of parking spaces that would require electrical vehicle charging stations can be determined in coordination of the applicant and the city. We kind of like negotiate that on a project-by-project basis, based on what the ex, anticipated use of the development will actually be, whether it's commercial or residential, whether it's, you know, a high-turn business.
Right, if he's got people coming and going and they're there for such a brief amount of time, they may not even. Right, if he's got people coming and going and they're there for such a brief amount of time, they may not even bother to plug in, some people might be inclined to do it, but.
Well, I think if you're like an employee.
But if it's an employee in a business and you're there and your car is there all day.
You're probably gonna use it.
Yeah, you've got a more likely more likely scenario where where, yes, they and they'd appreciate having that and probably would be getting in line if you have multiple employees.
Yeah, so if you're like a salon and your clients are coming in for an hour at a time and you've got three or four employees that are there all day, those three or four employees might want to plug in their vehicles, but people are there for an hour for an appointment, probably not, if you're like a CPA or some other sort of business service where people are coming in for longer periods of time, then maybe your clientele is actually using the stations. But because we don't really know, I think if we could at least look at potentially adding language to the ordinance that says the percentage of parking spaces requiring support for electrical electric vehicle charging stations can be negotiated or come to an agreement between the city and the applicant, something along those lines. Might be helpful for now, until we know more.
Okay.
Well, and I had just suggested to Eric too, maybe, I don't, I don't know what the formula is off the top of my head, but there's obviously a formula for ADA spaces, I mean, so obviously, I think that that, you know, that's done at a federal level, but that may be a good formula to at least base this on, I mean, obviously, you're getting one, two, you know, for our our size developments at least, you know, one, two, three spots, so maybe there's something in that formula that we can use as a base.
Keep in mind, the dilemma with that is what you see now, some businesses have charging stations. They never get used.
Right.
And then they have a big sign, these are for charging station vehicles only.
Right.
And then there's no place for anybody else to park.
Right, you start, you start.
The ordinance does say explicitly that if you have an electric vehicle, you don't have to park in a charging station spot. But if you don't have an electric vehicle, you can't park.
That's right.
Yeah, which is, which is, which is, yeah, it could be somewhat definitive or requirement that they have more parking to accommodate. It's it's so hard to predict though with the transition.
We already have such a problem with parking capacity.
Yeah.
You'll exacerbate it if you require more spots.
The minute you give up spots, the minute you make parking harder.
It may have to be some flexibility there in the transition.
And I really think that's going to come back down to where the business is.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I think it's going to come down to, uh, uh, the parking ordinance, you know, having a clear definition of what we want to put in the parking ordinance, after that, I think we're pretty much almost there.
Anything else on that topic?
A few more tweaks and then maybe.
Not, and we'll just, uh, yeah, no, no, no.
I I'm not sure that we are making any tweaks to the proposed language for the amended section, section two dot two.
Just.
And set an article four, which is a new section that would be added, so that's what's actually being in the graph language and what's proposed for us to consider today. Is just amending section two dot two, so that we have a definition for electric vehicle start charging stations in the ordinance. And then creating a new section called, or amending article four to include a new section called section four dot twenty for electric vehicle infrastructure. And I don't think anything we're talking about here actually changes anything that's in here today.
Hey.
But we, what we need is the additional language for section five dot thirteen for parking, which is what we've asked Gifford Webster to
Okay.
research for us.
Right, so at this point, there's nothing for us to vote on, or.
Well, I think what we need to propose is uh, setting a public hearing to get public feedback on this language that's proposed in the package today, yeah?
Oh. Jason's absolutely right.
Okay, Scott says I'm right, so yeah.
Yeah, so. There's a weird echo on my end, so I apologize, but yeah, scheduling the public hearing and then making future amend amendments as necessary into the parking can be done at a later time, but you know, it it makes sense to move this forward at this point.
I agree, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing to review the proposed language for electric vehicle infrastructure and electric vehicle charging stations.
Second.
May all those in favor?
Wait, wait. Before, I do, do you want to set the date right now, or do you just want it to be the next available meeting, I think, for March fifteenth?
For the next planning commission meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I'll amend my uh, motion to propose that we hold this public hearing on March fifteenth point twenty two.
Now, mind you, uh, the company that made the presentation is always open um, to ask questions, and they left that open when they made the presentation, so let's be mindful of that, if there's a gray area, you can always reach back out to them. And I have all the contact information.
Good point, so maybe it's worthwhile asking them for their, what their experiences in other communities where they're installing charging stations about things like percentage of parking spaces that are dedicated to electrical vehicle charging stations and uh, what other communities are doing that they're working with around providing service. Or future installation of charging stations. Like, yeah, it's a good idea, we should maybe via email, we can.
Well, any additional questions and, I don't know, uh, Suzie's writing down those notes, but any additional questions? If they can document that, then I'll make, I'll ask a question and then send it back out to the group, just so they're knowledgeable about it.
So maybe after this meeting, we can, Suzie, we can send you email with questions that we have related to this topic that we want parents to then send on. And then you can route it through that way, so we're not violating the Open Meetings Act.
That sounds fantastic.
Okay. All right, so do we have?
So, yes, I made a motion for uh, setting a public hearing.
In no second, okay, all those in favor?
All right.
I oppose. A hearing not, that motion is approved?
All right.
So we'll move on to new business.
Wow, we were supposed to do this in January, but, you know, things happen, selection of officers. It is, it is that time of year to uh, reelect or elect, you know, however it goes. Chair, vice chair and secretary, so.
So, uh, I want a discussion real quick, uh, because I I had an email conversation with Mark earlier about uh, nominating him to be chairperson again, but Mark's uh, term is ending in August. And Mark expressed that he's not planning to apply for another term after his current term expired. So the question I have for the rest of our group is, uh, do we want Mark to continue to do this job for the next six months, and then we'll have to find a new chair? To fill the spot after that, or should we select somebody who whose term isn't expiring?
If if I may, it would be succession, right, for whomever is vice chair.
Oh, so there's no election, it just automatically rolls down?
I was, I, I.
So does that mean that you replaced, is it automatically the secretary becomes vice chair?
Yeah.
I'm looking at.
I noticed that.
And then you would need to elect a new secretary.
And you would have to elect a new secretary.
I just happened to come across it as I was looking through the uh
Glad you found me, thank you for that.
Yeah, since I uh, expressed it to Suzie and she probably went right to that.
I just.
So.
All right.
Well, so based on that, I'm just thinking it might be, if we have an idea, like, I I, I'm I'm certainly welcome or interested in continuing in my role.
I am too.
Yeah, and I have.
But I'm open to.
And I have no objections continuing in my role as well.
But I'm also open to Will or Terrence, if you guys have any desire to be an officer on this commission to 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 do that, and uh so, but it might be easier if we um just have you be secretary, Mark, and then, because we're gonna have to fill that role again anyway. Unless you really want to continue to be chair for six months.
I'm fine with being chair for six months, if that, it does anything to help encourage or, you know.
I'd say.
Anybody walking, looking more carefully at what I do, how I do, what I do, um, I can say that anybody I've seen in this position has whatever degree they've been in, get into their, I want to say, comfort zone with it, but they've all done it somewhat differently, so.
Sure.
Okay.
And change is good.
Under this discussion, do we have to nominate a person for each position, or can we just simply nominate uh, to have the existing people maintain their position?
Scott Baker, that one is directly for you.
Yeah, I was unmuting as, I was unmuting as the question was being asked. Uh, so what you can do, you can nominate that each individual um, be so that Mark be chair, Jason be vice chair, and that you be be secretary on one motion, but you uh, you shouldn't just say everybody keeps their same spot.
Okay, but you can do it in one motion.
Another way, yeah.
Yeah, you can combine all three offices into one.
In one motion, that was, I was trying to get the one motion.
Right.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to nominate Mark Kapowski for chairperson, myself for vice chair, and my stands very for secretary of the planning team.
Second.
No, yeah. Any comments? All those in favor?
I.
Do you have to accept nominations independently, Scott?
No need to do that.
Okay, I.
I.
I. I think we're, I think we've taken care of that, that order of business, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Offices will remain the same from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
At least on.
At least throughout, okay. Okay, we'll move on to the next item of uh, business, uh, twenty twenty one planning commission annual report.
Right, so um I I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to read through this, we were, you're really busy last year. Despite the fact that we're still all totally remote and, you know, um, and zooming and zooming through all over planning commission meetings that are literally and figuratively. Um, most of our, most of our work was um, related to zoning updates and uh, finishing out the comprehensive plan. Um, we did have, we did have a total of uh, nine meetings, three Z D A meetings, we did not have any joint um, meetings with the city council and D D A, but I promise you that will change this year, we will have at least one. Um, and we did have, uh, we did, we only had two redevelopment applications, which I found surprising when when I was rereading through all the we did a lot more, so. Um, but overall, I think you should give yourselves a pat on the back, you accomplished a lot last year, and uh I sure have plans to continue accomplishing a lot this year, so. Um, unless there are specific questions, uh, we will just need a motion to um, accept the uh, the annual report and forward it on to the council.
Uh, so we didn't do a lot of work on this, but we did convene a subcommittee to review building materials ordinances. It is not mentioned in this annual report.
I think that to Jason's point, we we had, had a, had a meeting and 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 they had some really good discussions.
Yeah. Did some research.
During during the lull in the proceeds, yeah, the level of COVID and its influence, and and then when things started to uh, ramp up again, we just kind of went laid low again, so. So, but it is something that we need to get back to this year.
And it should be noted in the annual report, because this is something we actually did.
Yeah. This is like the initiative.
So do you want to resubmit this next month, or should we make like a uh, motion to approve the annual report with the suggested amendment to add a reference to the building material supplement?
I like, I like that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I like to keep it simple and draw it, draw it out.
So, I would like to make a motion to approve the annual report of the planning commission for twenty twenty one with an amendment to include a reference to the building material supplement.
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
All right.
I oppose. Hearing none, unanimous motion passed.
Quick question, uh, since Suzie's sitting here. And since we just approved the board to report to the council. The projects that are listed in here. Even though we usually wait to the end, are there any current updates on any of them?
Uh, U S rehab is uh, currently underway. They are uh, they're pretty close to being done, right, I mean, they're, they're really um, they've they've been working really hard on their inferior improvement.
The one where the cleaners used to.
That is correct.
Oh, yeah, there's equipment in there now.
Yeah, so they're, they're getting awfully close, um, I actually just asked, tell them about that yesterday. Is that all, yesterday? Um, so, so I would expect that they're going to be open here um, in the next, the next month or so. Um.
They're just waiting for the contractor to return to town so that they can get their final inspection.
Yes.
Um, and then discount hire is, they they are working on their end here, and I have literally just sent them their second engineer, their second review letter for engineering last, last week, so um, and we're, we're working on some final paperwork with them. Um, I know that the building official, he's reviewed their plans, I don't know if they've been approved yet at this point or not. Um, so I would expect that they're going to start, will start paying contractual construction work, um, as soon as the the ground starts entirely.
If they've secured the material.
Right, 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 so there's that, um, and just because we're talking about projects, we do have um beauty hunters is in the, the Cernal Plaza that was rebuilt last year, two years ago. Beauty Hunters just opened, they still have one open space, um, I know they they have, and they have, I used, they would like to see their, this currently in a holding pattern.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, right, so that's their one open space, um, Beauty Hunters just opened last month, um, we also have anchor, anchor fish market um, down by Echo Smoke, um, Bike Lot Spot, they just opened, so. This is a good stop, so.
Yes, great, okay, well, move on.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Uh, stormwater management introductory discussion.
So you, you do not have anything in your pack about this, um, and this was um, this is something Jill and I had actually started talking about.
I was saying, how can we talk about this without Bruce, I said Bruce would be somehow involved.
Well, so this is, I mean, and this was going to be more of that introductory conversation, it kind of started a little bit while I guess that was talking about what what can we do for stormwater management? Um, and one of the things that I would really like to see us start discussing is how we, how, several things really, we've got a, we've got our, our tree situation, our street trees, how do we how do we maybe want to modify our landscaping, tree species, those kinds of neighborhood oriented um stormwater management practices, if you want to, what we want to do with that. Um, also, we have something that we kind of popped up as we've been going through all the infrastructure projects are um is the number of, um, I like extra parking, right, like the extra parking pads, much pads that you see off the side, um, some of those are permitted, like literally have gotten a permit to do the work. Some of them are just just in there. Um, and.
This commercial? The commercial parking pad?
No, no, these are residential.
Talking about the uh, the areas adjacent to the road where they've literally paved over the um positions, the culverts, you know.
Yeah, right away, there's not not all of them are where the ditches are. Maybe some of them are where ditches should be, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's like a, it's a multi-headed beast.
Right, because it's issues related to just, okay, how much pavement, and that means runoff.
Yeah.
And and how do you, how does that get regulated, should it be regulated?
And and as we all know, I mean, drainage is an issue, right, I mean, even at the last infrastructure midi meeting, it was talked about, um, we had a resident come and talk about how, you know, his sidewalks, like the way they're pitched. They hold, you know, the sidewalks are at a lower level than the road, and then that just, I mean, you see it on Cambridge, all right, it's terrible, I mean, it's like a lake Lake Cambridge. So, you know, how can we what can we do to adjust that, and then, you know, and then going. And then, you know, and then going back to your point of the permeable surface and stormwater runoff and. We have drainage issues, so what can we do, and where would you like to start? Addressing some of these stormwater issues. So, it's a very broad, it's a very broad start, but.
This, this is what we need Bruce. If we start at the end of it, where does the water go, what's our infrastructure? On that end, right, and then you start to look at what can we do from a zoning perspective to match with that, because the water's going somewhere and, and you know, like Berkeley. What, what, what happens with the pumping station if it actually breaks, et cetera, et cetera, so there's that side, and then what can we do to actually match with? The, the problems that we know may exist in the future or if it's old.
Right, right, and I, and I raised the question with Bruce, I think along the way, when they were proposing even just the road improvements and the money for that and. And uh, the consideration at the time for, what do you do with? The culverts or the, the ditches, the drainage areas when, you know, if you're redoing the road, do you redo that? And if you redo that, how does it impact the trees when you redo that? Years ago, I took a treekeeper class and, and the. Um, arborists that I spoke with. Um, and who presented their materials would essentially say that in most cases, the right of ways, the, the green strip that we have between our sidewalks. And our roadways are insufficient in size to, to accommodate shade trees. That's quite a blow to, 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 you know, to go and tell, I mean, especially when they're competing with drainage, I mean, as well, I mean, obviously. That helps the tree in part because they have a source of, ready source of water flowing by them or can help them. As long as the water flows and it drains and it's, it's not always saturated. But it does something for the aesthetics, if you say, no, you know, you could take an approach of, you just allow trees, just. You know, in that zone, and um, from many, I think, I don't know, I, I, going through the neighborhood, many properties. There are folks who don't want trees, some don't want trees at all, they don't want the, the fall cleanup. But, but the loss of trees in a community and the trees contribute quite a bit to the appearance, so. That's, that's a, that's a bad aspect of it, and that's not precisely drainage, but it can help with runoff too, so.
I'm certainly not advocating to remove trees, just, so you know.
Right, no, no, I was gonna say, there, there was a, uh, I think in the, the latest city newsletter, a reference to it, because. You know, I've taken down one tree that, that died in front of my house, and I, and I have another tree that I know has a structural problem that I. Would wanna take care of, and when I do, it's gonna disfigure the tree and not make it very viable. From my perspective, I can talk to an arborist and say, hey, what can you do if I take off this one third of the tree and the rest is going off in one direction? Um, but, 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 but hearing it's like, okay, well, what is the regulation, I have to go and look it up to see. Because we haven't really spoken of what that is in any of the sessions I've been, we've talked about. Do we have a tree ordinance, what is it? And then anybody who's on the list and been signed up for the Michigan Association of Planners, their newsletter, which came in yesterday, had a fascinating. Story of uh, of, of, of Canton and their tree ordinance. And the legal issues they ran into and, and have lost, uh, so, the, the, just, I haven't read the whole thing yet, but it raised a bunch of questions in my mind. Not, not necessarily, you know, not being aware of necessarily what, what laid roots. Criteria is, but um, uh, from, from a, from a legal standpoint, but it does have a criteria to what it is.
Wh- wh- what if we started with just vegetation between sidewalk and road? Right, because there's a lot more than just trees that were, that, that is also part of what the water said, you know, we have some residents that are. You know, growing different types of. Rain gardens, a- a- and, and so really, if we just uh start kind of higher and say vegetation between sidewalk and street, what, what are we doing from a? The most broadest stroke from a zoning standpoint and then work our way down to detail. Um, and maybe include sidewalk in that discussion, uh, in terms of uh, you know, pitching, et cetera. Uh, that, that would also help the change of example, um, so we say, okay, this is the zone we wanna focus on. We can't get into the pumping station. Uh, but we can at least be in sync with uh, that partnership of thinking, um, at least.
Yes, I think also, um, Bruce, he had a, he started a good discussion on a lot of this already. And where we could possibly start, but I think if we go back to Bruce, because a lot of this was addressed in the infrastructure.
Right.
Rain gardens came up, trees came up, uh, whereas they were putting in new uh sewer lines, a lot of that, a lot of this has come up. We just need to pick a piece to start with, I mean, obviously, it's a big topic. Because, you know, and there were, there is, and like, uh, like we were just discussing, there's an ordinance about trees. I've been here a long time, I've never seen it, but I do remember, uh, we put in nine trees at our house already. And then, of course, at some point, I think four or five of them died because they were ash trees. But the city administrator, long time ago, came by and asked how do we keep our trees alive, because they were all dying. And you know, I was like, we, we hold on to them. But ultimately, ultimately, the tree was, it died, okay, it was, so when the, when the guys came out and because we like trees. When the guys came out to take the tree down, the cold person came by and gave him a hard time. And said, you can't take this tree down, and I said, of course, at that time, it wasn't on the planning commission. So my response was simple, I paid to put the tree up, I'm paying to take the tree down, because it's going to kill, it's dying. So it's either gonna, I'm either gonna sit here and watch it die, and it's gonna come down, or I'm gonna pay to cut it down, so I can put two more trees in its place. But we do need to know what the ordinance is, because we don't want to create that conflict with residents as we, as people try to beautify their, their property. In the process of.
Right.
Improvement and, in your case, if you cut off a third of your tree, it's gonna look really bad. You might wanna invest in saying, you know what, I, I don't really wanna kill the tree and cut it down, but if I do take the tree down, I'm willing to put up two new trees. But if the city comes by and says you can't take the tree down at all, you're gonna catch.
Yeah, and it's also the interesting thing, because I've been through, I've planted, I planted four trees at various times and, and one of them. One of them I planted was a spruce, grew it from a seedling on Arbor Day that you got and grew it to a nice size. We decided we had a tree we liked better, so we passed that tree along to friends of ours and it's grown marvelously in their yard, it's tall and. Daily, and we replaced it with a fir. The fir did well for a while and it died, and so it's gone, we took it out, we didn't replace it at that point, because we figured it's, it's just gonna. The area has been struggling, so if you're putting trees in, who's to say what quantity is right and when you have to. When you're required to put something back, I mean, I, I would have taken more advantage of plant, if I had bigger property, I'd plant more trees. I planted a white pine years ago when my son was born, right before he was born. And that tree died this past year and we took it down ourselves in the front, I mean, it was a good forty foot tree and we managed to. Play the lumberjack and, 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 and did it, and did it.
Just use that hand saw.
Uh, for the first main part of it, yes, and then we chopped up the big stuff with a chain, with a rented chainsaw, so. But um, yeah, it was standing dead all through the summer and it's like, okay, I gotta take this down before it, it falls, before it reaches that state. And um, but it was like the, the, the year of assessing trees, I have a tree in the backyard. That's got a disease that it will not recover from and it's going slowly and I've been protecting my house by taking off limbs. Periodically, but it's gonna have to come.
And, and the question is, if the trees that are in the right of.
We're, we're digressing, but.
But the, the, the question about, it's more the trees in the right of way, because the right of way is where you get into. The, the homeowners to maintain it, but it's the, technically it's not there through. They don't control it, but they have a part to maintain it, so when we put up all these red maple trees, they're great, but then we put up a tree in the original set of trees. It's a really nice big tree, but it's killing my grass, I mean, it's literally killing everything around it. So when it, we, when we cut it down, I'm sure somebody's gonna come by and say, you can't cut the tree down in the right of way. But then, twenty years ago, when the city was asking people to put trees in, they weren't saying, well, if you put the tree in and the tree dies, you have to pay to put it in and pay to take it down.
I was gonna say fifteen years ago, when I had another tree that it got, you know, it got struck by a lawnmower, that's a scar up the side. Disfigured, caused trouble with it, and I, and so I asked them, I said, is there any problem with, with the taking, with having it taken down, and at the time, it was. We're not gonna pay to take it down, that's what the city's response was, so I said, okay, fine, okay, I just need, I just wanted to check. Permission wise, but I didn't have any issues with doing it after, um, you know.
But I think we all need to probably take a look at it, so it's not ambiguous, not only to us. But it will be something we can communicate to all the other residents, so people will really know, and it can be tied into. Cause the infrastructure is gonna continue to get improved, they're gonna keep tearing up people's lawn, they're gonna keep cutting down some trees to put in new drainage. The odds is all gets addressed and that way we can discuss it and be communicated to everybody about.
Yeah.
What is gonna happen and what you're responsible for and what the city will be responsible for. And then we can work together to try to address the storm issues, because, you know, it's, it's like now, I mean, you, we all know it's supposed to be fifty tomorrow, right? So fifty tomorrow, we're, we're gonna have the same problem I have today, half of my sidewalk is gonna be all water.
Yeah.
And then on Thursday, it's gonna be all ice, which is a problem.
For a lot of reasons, right?
It's been a great season for that.
But that, it addresses, because there's nowhere for the water to go, you know, no matter how much we, you know, our ditches are there, it's just. The, the way the water runs out.
And, and it's, yeah, the, the, yeah, the, what we've been experiencing, at least what I've been experiencing in my yard is, the ground is frozen. But it warms up enough and it all just flows and it, it's all over the sidewalk, it's all on the surface and it's not draining, well, it's gonna drain as much as your property is slow. But it's not gonna soak into the ground, very well these days, so, anyway.
But I think you're right, it's such a big topic, so, starting with, starting with Bruce, I think he can kind of give us where they. Looked at, and then from there, we can.
From, from the infrastructure standpoint and, and, and what that might guide us in one, one aspect of it, and I think understanding. You know, the tree ordinance requirements is probably something that we should just, yeah, bring to the table and discuss, understand.
Yeah, because I think, a- at least, and I know Willie has something you wanna add to, um, I know, I, and I kind of see it as a- almost. Almost three parts, right, like we have like the actual, like, the physical infrastructure, roads and ditches and culverts and all that fun stuff. And then we have the tree, tree, a tree ordinance, right, which. Prescribes, what do we do, what do we do for street trees, what kind of street trees are good, what kinds are bad? What kind of permissions do you need, if you're, if any, if you're gonna trade, um, trim, top them down. I've had several residents ask me about um, tree replacement, um, like, how can we, how can the city facilitate? Um, basically bulk quantity purchase of, of trees for others to plant. Um, and then, and then also dealing with the area between the right of way, like I know rain gardens were. A big thing before my time, I know that some people continue to do them well. And some people continue to do them not well, and then there's probably also a group of people that think they're doing rain yards really well. And they're not doing rain gardens at all, that I would probably totally fall into that camp, just saying, um, and so. And, and somewhere in all three of those categories are, what can we do as just regular citizens to. Improve our own situation beyond saying, okay, I've paid some money for, you know, I'm paying my extra in my water bill. What else can I, right, so.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I'm thinking as a commissioner, this topic of stormwater management, normally we have an infrastructure bill, I wanna know how the city council. Was there anything that they're planning, uh, from an infrastructure bill standpoint, as it actually moves down the pipe? Uh, for some of the small Michael Benson city of our size, um, because we, we talked about roads. Though, I mean, bad timing, but that would have actually helped, you know, you start to think about some of these pieces, so from a zoning perspective, we can be in alignment. If, if they are thinking that way and they, they see some opportunities that actually kind of focuses our discussion, uh, so we're showing that up with zoning. Right, and so I, so sometimes knowing where the North Star is, we, we kind of know the path that we should actually at least be discussing. Otherwise, we're talking about it generically, uh, and, and, and we may be missing something if that's what the committees, the commission or the council's actually considering. Uh, so that, that's something I was thinking about.
So I know, uh, historically, the city did have a tree replacement program that the city actually ran. That, uh, they would offer twice a year, uh, any homeowner to buy two trees at the cost of the city. At the homeowner's expense, but still like, it was kind of a cost savings program.
This is like for planting in the right of way, though.
Right, yeah, planting in the right of way, but, uh, but the program existed and then it died, and I know there's some residents who are interested in bringing that. Program back, I had in the city, bring that program back, so that probably needs to be considered as part of that, the tree component. Uh, what do we do about stormwater management?
So when the city has done that, they, they, I, I know it goes back to, sorry if I'm interrupting, no, um, uh. We had our own Department of Public Works staff, and then it, then it's now it's. Contracted up, is the contracted staff performing tree planting?
No one. It's like, we're, in case you are not aware, we are extremely under staff now, I mean, you're looking at like.
I'm not going in the direction of, yeah, I, I was just.
I've got a post hole and I have been, I have been a chick with power tools and a hand tool.
She's seen me take them down.
I think that might be outside my uh, time constraints right now, right?
My, my point in the question was just ensuring that when trees are planted, that they're planted correctly.
And that's the thing, there is no, if, if there was a city sponsored program that helped with homeowners with the cost. And also, kind, you know, that, some guidance on how to actually do it properly.
Right.
Or even the offer of a service that you could subcontract that's kind of certified by the city, because it's somebody that we trust and we know will actually do it. Proper way and consistent with all the city's ordinances and policies and best practices.
Yeah, best so your tree survives and have the best hope of growing, growing well, yes.
So I think that there's uh, support for that amongst the residents, that's kind of the point I was trying to make. And while I agree, like, we gotta check with Bruce and with the infrastructure team to make sure that whatever we're discussing in this context is in line with what. They see as the highest priorities relative to dealing with our stormwater management problems. It sounds like trees is kind of where it's at, based on our discussion tonight, and we need to confirm that, but that's just kind of the sense I get.
I, I think trees are important to people and I think people can get passionate about them, um, I think there's two aspects of it. So storm management is one thing, so that may affect where we decide where trees are allowed. Relative to a plan for stormwater management, um, yeah, so that, I mean, there's that aspect of it. Um, as well as just, you know, criteria for, you know, trees, you know. What you're allowed to do, if you're, you know, if there's any restrictions regarding taking trees down, planting trees. Um, what type of trees, that, that's kind of a separate issue, a separate, dare I say, branch? On that note, yeah, there's nothing for us to finalize here, we'll, we'll, we'll have, uh, we'll have Bruce back with us and we can get that perspective and. And uh, and uh, probably have a quicker conversation, but I think this being together, you know, it's been a long time, there's uh, yeah, there's. Maybe we're shooting the breeze a little bit more than we normally would in one of these meetings.
Well, and I will say, before we um, kind of move off of that real quick, it's um. Yes, trees are important, I also really, um, going back to Will's comment about like, what do we do in that public right of way space? Um, and that's also. That is also very important in terms of not, not even be, getting beyond the paintings, but what, you know, what do we do with those extra parking? Areas, because those do have a dramatic impact on. The water flow, um, in the neighborhoods, right?
And appearance of the neighborhood too.
And appearance and, you know, like that same resident that came and talked at the infrastructure committee about the, the. He had several pictures that he had presented to the group and, and looking at them again after the meeting. You know, yes, the, the parking or the parking lot, the sidewalk in one of the pictures was sloping, you know. The, the pitch was off, right? And it was totally flooded. But then if you look at the adjacent street, the whole section right next to it is all paved for somebody else, for someone's parking. So, you know, where, where's that, where's that tipping point, right? What, what, what was, what's the exacerbating cause, right? Is it the, the, is, would, would the flooding on that sidewalk be as bad? If that area of right of way was grass? Some other sort of natural.
Yeah, permeable, permeable surface.
You know, and so I don't wanna say, I don't want you to think just strictly about trees and planting. Well, I, I will hug that out myself, but like also some of these other like low impact. You know, permeable pavement, are there certain areas where that may be more appropriate to, um, and use that out into the commercial district? Right, so.
Well, are there experts that could like do a small feasibility thing? Because sometimes you don't know if you don't know. Uh, what options are available like that? I'm just wondering.
One of the things that I do is pay attention to where permeable surfaces are being installed. And I say that because I think we have one example and that it's in like the MRI facility where it just.
It's not really the best.
No, it's, it's an example of something wrong. Um, I'm trying to think a, a, a long-term solution that, that's working well. City of Southfield at Carpenter Lake paved their parking lot all with permeable pavers. And they're breaking up and what is it, ten years, maybe? Ten years and they're crumbling. So I'm, I'm, I'm yet to see something long-term in a permeable paving solution. That is, you know, that, you know, whether it's a lawful paver where you have the grass growing through. Where they necessarily live up to everything they claim that they are. And, and I, and that's just my impression from observation. So I'm not, yeah, but, but that's, that's an aspect of consideration, certainly.
So the, uh, the infrastructure committee is, is storm or the ditches and, and culverts as part of, you know, their. Project, right? The, the, the project, the, the, the millage thing for paving. But then the engineers are also assessing those ditches and culverts because you don't want those things causing problems. That essentially degrade the road that we're now installing faster than it would be otherwise, right? And then if there's an issue or, you know, some remediation that needs to be done of those ditches and culverts, then there's potentially a speculative assessment. For the homeowners to pay for that part of the project. But it's, all, and all I'm saying about that is that engineers are looking at that kind of stuff relative to stormwater management because of the road progress. So maybe we can piggyback on that, right?
Right.
The engineers may already be looking at it, at least in the seven miles of road that are actually gonna be touched in the project, not the other, you know.
Well, they may be able to recommend again, that's all I was thinking is, you know, it's one thing for us to have the discussion, but sometimes, uh, just a little bit of information. Could actually point us in a zoning perspective, what to do again in that right of way space. And then, you know, I think it's really probably outside of their scope and we talk about trees and, and any vegetation. But in, engineers saying, well, this is our experience or a- anything that helps us make that decision or at least guides us. That's what I was thinking.
Good point, yeah.
I have enough there, I'll bring our end here on what maybe March, April. We can talk about this more, I'll see what his availability, availability, there we go. And maybe start having some of those conversations.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I think we can move on to other matters for discussion. And it's what I was just thinking. Okay, we'll move on to general communication.
Um, I just included, uh, the twenty twenty-two Oakland County Coordinating Zoning Committee, uh, letter. It just, it just so happened that I got their information literally as I was putting the packet together and.
Oh.
I don't know if anybody knows that the county offers this service. We don't really take advantage of it too often. Uh, they did review our comprehensive plan as part of the, um, the state requirements anyways. And so, um, that's pretty much our, that's pretty much our involvement with, uh, the community.
They review our master plan?
They review our master plan and make sure it's consistent with, uh, the county, the county goals, objectives, make some minor suggestions. Which I think they did, um, and, uh, but that's really just FYI, so learn a little. Um, I did also pass out, uh, you've got your lovely pamphlet from the road commission. I've been saving this for, I've been saving this for you for at least a month. Um, so happy to meet you for that. I will change your, update your address for map. I don't know why they seem to wanna send everything to you. But I'll update that.
Let me report from Scott.
Nothing for me tonight.
Nothing for you tonight, okay. About Eric.
No, Suzie covered too much, everything that I was prepared to talk about.
I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion adjourned. Thank you everyone.
Thanks Scott.
Thank you Scott.